Call any order. Please call our... Here.
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 All right, agenda number two. Agenda number two, discussion recommendations to certain financial state of the village. I think the village clerk sent some emails out to the trustees, I think Mr. Mohan sent some emails out to trustees asking for trustees to provide recommendations as to financial state of the village. And I didn't see any trustee respond. So I'm going to move up to the floor to start with and see if the trustees have any recommendations. So what we're going to do is I'd like to move forward on some discussion. We've looked at the finances of the village and I did receive an email, or I didn't receive an email, but I know back to the village clerk from trustee worship to ask him what past precedents was set for finances of the village. So I did a little bit of research on what the village had done in the past to be able to continue moving forward. And what I found was in 2007, 2008, the village took out line of credits. Those were under ordinances number 0851 and 0760. In 2009, the village took out a promissory note and that was under ordinance to number 0940. And then of course, the village knows what happened after 2009. The administration felt that they were going to take loans from the water fund to keep the village moving forward. And which is not against the law, which is not illegal, it's by state statute, everything was done legally, money was paid back to those funds. So looking at that, again, this is nothing new to the village. The village has always had to either take out line of credit, they either had to take out promissory notes, or they had to borrow from the water fund to continue to keep the village moving forward. And this goes all the way back to 2007, based off of some of the things that I've looked up. So knowing that, the village could probably continue going forward borrowing money from the water fund. However, we all know that we don't need an consent order through the IPA. We know that we need to build the revenues that we have in the water fund so that we can continue to meet that consent order. So knowing that, I would ask that we move forward tonight and consider going out for a line of credit. Now, there is on the agenda at the seven o'clock meeting to an ordinance to be able to move forward, the fact I have an ordinance. This allows us as a village to go out and for a line of credit, work with the banks. And as the ordinance states, it's not to exceed more than $500,000. And this ordinance is just based off of the same ordinance that was passed back in 2007, 2008, that timeframe. So it's the same, pretty much the same ordinance that the board passed back then. So again, we know that we need to have money inside our water fund to move forward. And I'd rather not borrow, continue borrowing money from the water fund because we're being closer and closer for the village's loan through the IPA. And we need to make sure that we have those funds available inside that account. So the, this is, this line of credit is not to exceed $500,000. And again, this is nothing more than businesses do, municipalities do to get a line of credit so that we can continue making payroll, so we can continue moving forward as we wait for our tax revenue to start coming in. Do you have anything you'd like to add? With that said, I'll move up to the floor, to the board.
First thing, I did talk to Mohan, I did kind of talk to him about the state of the village as far as financial status. And I want to go back to when you said recommendations. First of all, before we give this line of credit, how are we for next payroll coming up on the 27th?
Uh, next payroll, I'm expecting a month. Illinois, in connection with $100,000. Normally, they will pay one installment in December. There are numerous instances that the league might get two installments. Once anyway, they just sent two installments instead of one. That will be brought from about $50,000, $60,000 for each installment. Two installments will be worth $120 on an average installment. Plus, we will get our state feds back, plus local units back, plus communication backs, which would be supplies to get over this summer.
Okay, because the last communication that you sent out stated that we were borrowing for the 20th, for the 20th. Then you also stated that we would have to have a meeting, and I think the mayor knows about it because he's going to say he's going to come up with something, for the 27th. So therefore, I...
Right now, we didn't borrow anything.
No, no, I understand, I'm saying that your communication stated that we just have to...
We may, I said we may have to.
Right, we may have to. So you're saying right now, we don't have to do anything for the 27th of November? Okay, so we have enough for that?
And I think the correspondence from the finance director was making sure to get out to the village board early enough that just in case the money didn't come in and we needed to pay, make payroll, he wanted to make sure to warn them.
Well, it hasn't came in yet, though, has it?
No, the money's come in to make payroll.
To make the 27th payroll?
Yes.
Okay, so this money that we're talking about, this line of credit, first of all, are we, are we guaranteeing this? Is it going to be backed by this thing, or is it just going to be a basic loan?
Not yet, they are not committed yet, they are still contacting the US bank.
This is something that they requested every pass an ordinance before they go forward to the date. Before they do all the work together, they put together, and then the village board's not for it. They want to stay in ordinance in place saying that they're authorizing the village to move forward for a line of credit. So that's what the ordinance is for tonight.
Right, I just read that, but I wanted to know, do they know what, I mean, I don't want to borrow money and find out later the interest rate is double digits, is what I'm trying to say.
All right, I think it's in the best interest of the village and its residents not to get something like that. So again, working with our banks, trying to get the best interest rate. We're looking at multiple banks to find out if they're even interested in giving us a line of credit. So this is just like the first, well, the first step is reaching out to the banks. This is the second step, where you pass the ordinance to, so it shows the banks that the village wants to move forward with the line of credit. And then as we get the information, the information we provide it to the board so that they will see exactly what they're offering us for when it comes to interest rates, the term of the, if you'll call it the loan, the line of credit, when it has to be paid back, all that has been presented back to the board. This is just so we can get to that next step.
I understand, Mayor, but my question is, is this, is either this or highway, is basically what I'm saying. You know, that's what you're, that's the way you're presenting it. Now, we have to go this route because we've exhausted everything, so we have to go with a lot of credit. I'm just wondering, has there, you know, or I see now that there isn't any interest rate or they haven't projected, or because we have to give them. I'm just looking at once, because it's stated here in the ordinance that we're given the mayor the power to do whatever necessary to, you know, to guarantee this loan, to secure this loan. Which means at that particular point, which right now, we have no choice. We have to do something. I'm just wondering, has there any, has there been any inquiry as to what the interest rate may or may not be? They won't even, they won't even give us that until they get the executive order that we have in ordinance that's been passed?
Not yet, but once I provide all the information, the ordinance copy, then there's the rate of interest and other conditions.
But by that time, the board's already given consent or whatever it is it is?
Yeah, definitely, probably, it could never be more than the market rate. Market rate is almost 600, 700% right now.
And my last question, the loan that we just did from our own selves, 400, that's coming out of the tax. There's nothing, this has nothing to do with it, this will be a separate.
And again, this is a line of credit. And I guess the village board could probably consider just going forward and continue getting money out of the water fund. But again, we know the loan is coming up. And we know that the IPA is looking for money to be inside the water fund. We do not want to jeopardize moving forward and jeopardizing our consent order through the courts.
I understand, Mayor, I mean, we've done this, as you stated, at least two or three times before. In the past, we had a line of credit. We were able to pay it off in the next installment of taxes. This one won't, that won't happen this tax, we'll have to take out an actual loan payment. But I'm just looking, I mean, I'm glad that we didn't go and borrow money from the water fund at this particular time. But are these funds going to be used in case, for payroll, or is it going to be used for debt service? You don't have, you have no idea what you're going to use for?
Right now, we have to say in the morning to use the payroll form. Maybe a little bit of other livelihoods like legal aid and R and D, like your life.
Because come May, I'm sorry, come March, we have to, we have to pay back 400,000, some thousand, from the taxes. So I guess this will be, I'm just, I don't know, I'm asking. Would this be part of that, to pay that because the $400,000 that we borrowed was money that was already budgeted for, for this ensuing year? So would this take care of that and then we'll just pay that back? I mean, just asking the question, I don't know how you plan it.
Until March, we may not be able to pay back any of it.
No, no, I'm saying, when March comes, when we get the money from the, from the federal taxes, it's, I don't know how much it is, tax write. I don't know how much it is, but we're obligated to pay that back from the funds, the funds back. Will you be using that money that we're getting out to pay some of that back, or?
Probably, we can use that money and pay back all the funds that we have.
What we're expecting, if I remember right, 2.3 million?
2.4 million.
2.4 million. And plus, there's other money that's coming in that goes over to certain locations. Of the 2.4 million dollars, I mean, it would be my very good recommendation to pay back these loans. Again, with a line of credit up to $500,000, you know, we would hope that we wouldn't have to use the full $500,000. But again, it's a credit, a line of credit up to $500,000 until we start seeing our tax money coming in.
But my original question was, when we get the tax money, we've already stated that we were going to use it to pay back the money that we borrowed from the water fund and from the CNN grant. Okay. Because really, it's coming, the money that's coming in is the money that we use for our budget. That's, that's possible, therefore, that'll be put back into the budget, is what I'm trying to say. So basically, this will be something that we're doing proactively now to offset that amount of money that's coming out. Is that what, is that what this is, that's what I'm asking?
Yes. The goal is to pay the money back, once the tax revenue starts coming in, to pay the money back to the accounts that we borrowed from and to pay back this line of credit. So that that's wiped clean and we'll continue moving forward with what money, revenues we have left.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to straighten, I mean, the only answer I wanted is, are we going, okay, the $500,000 that we have a line of credit, we borrowed 430,000 already from our funds, which we said we're going to pay it back out of the tax money. Okay, now, we know that if we pull that money out of taxes, something's going to go lacking. There's going to be a deficit somewhere because all that money that's coming in in March was budgeted for. That's what we budgeted. So now, since we're going to do this line of credit, are we going to dedicate some of this, or most of this money to pay that debt off? That way, rather than trying to pull the money out of the taxes? I know you're saying we can, I'm just, I'm just, that's what I'm asking.
I guess I'm just mistaken, because the money that we're getting the line of credit for is money that we budgeted for also. When you look at payroll, payroll is budgeted, okay? So this line of credit is to go toward payroll, it's going to pay the bills. I mean, it's not, we're not getting a line of credit to go purchase something.
No.
So I don't understand the question.
No, okay, the line of credit is nothing, we didn't budget for a line of credit. When we budget, we budgeted for money that was coming in from taxes. We did not have no idea at that time that we were going to use that money for this. I'm asking, since we stated, and since it was stated at the meeting, that we would pay back the money that we borrowed as soon as we get the money in from the taxes. Now, I'm asking, instead of doing that, taking that money out of the taxes, which is part of what we use payroll for and everything else, for the budget, are we going to use this money, line of credit, to pay back those, the water fund and CN fund, out of this? Or is we going to still go forth and pay and take the money out of the taxes to pay back the water fund?
Yeah, because the line of credit is not to pay back any of the...
Okay, so therefore, we're still going to go forth and pay, and pay the CN money and also the water fund money out of the taxes?
Correct.
Okay, so this will, that's what, that's all I was asking, so this is going to be separate? Okay.
Yes, trustee Markey.
What's the final percentage I'm removing, I don't know if I can hear?
We don't have a percentage yet. What we have is, this is the second step of looking at the banks. The first step was reaching out to them. Second step is making sure that the ordinance saying that we want to move forward for the line of credit. They will provide, if we're eligible, they'll provide all the information to us with the amount of payment, the interest rates, and like that. Any other questions? All right, this ordinance is on the agenda tonight for the seven o'clock meeting for the line of credit. So if you have any questions before the next meeting, you can reach out to Mr. Mohan, he's got answers. Again, this is, I guess, this is the next step with the village to move forward to get the line of credit with the banks. All right? Is there anything else we want to discuss about the finances? I can't give anything right now. We'll move it up to I have number three of the agenda item number.
Bernie Sisk, I have, I really don't understand what you're talking about with the line of credit. A question I would like to answer. Did anybody say what kind of collateral that we're going to have to shore up this loan? And you guys want to sign an ordinance to, and to an agreement to get $500,000 for, that you don't know what the interest rate is? That might stand, and what happens if we can't be paid? What penalties are we going to assess for getting this money? And also, what is the plan to cut spending? You know, we borrowing, borrowing, Peter PayPal, now we outside, now we going outside and getting money from Peter's cousin. So I'd like to know what we're going to do for cutting up expenses here? And it's my understanding that according to what trustee Burgess asked, we get 2.54 million for income tax. We're going to get, we already paid $450,000. We're going to get additional $500,000. And all this is going to be paid out of the tax retro money that we're going to get? Is that right? Are you going to reimburse us for tax revenue?
Is that all your questions?
No, okay, does that get everything? I didn't think they were going to be... Okay, do y'all, we start with the end and then anybody get my questions? Y'all?
Well, I think what we have for us tonight is there's an ordinance that the village can establish, they have it up to $500,000. This is so that we can go to the banks and the banks know that the village wants to move forward on this. There are certain things that the banks ask for. They're asking for financial statements, they're asking for, what's that, the application, they're asking for an ordinance. There are certain things that they ask for so they can move forward on their thing. This allows us to move forward on that. Again, the line of credit is up to $500,000. It allows it where we have $500,000 sitting out there, okay? And if we get to a point where we don't have enough to make payroll, rather than coming back and borrowing money from the water fund, we have a signed credit to come back and make payroll. The object with this $500,000, number one, not to use the full $500,000, okay? The object is having this out here so that we can continue making the day-to-day and continue to make payroll. And again, there are some small bills and stuff out there we may have to reach out to, to pay. But again, a lot of businesses do this when it comes to certain times of the year, and the municipalities do this. And again, it's not something the village hasn't done in the past. This is something that, again, if you go back and look at the ordinances, which I gave them out earlier, the ordinances show that the village did this in 2007, 2008, 2009. And after 2009, the previous administration decided to start taking money from the water fund. And everyone knows that it came out that the village was borrowing money from the water funds to continue to keep the village moving forward. So, you know, we're getting away from borrowing money from the water fund and going back and getting the line of credit. And it's important because we have other obligations to meet when it comes to getting our mortgage loan through the IPA. We need to make sure that there's funds available inside our water fund. And rather than borrowing money from there and having nothing there, we're going to make sure we continue to build that up so that when we finally get the loan, everything is in place, as it's supposed to be.
And Peter, if you had one question ahead, was the plan to cut spending?
Cutting spending will have to come on the budget. I mean, we're on a budget here right now. Again, when we look at our department heads, we tell them to cut overtime as much as they can. There's some departments that, I mean, we've got a fire department out working on a fire right now. There is an asset out there working on fire right now. When you have events that happen in your community, a police department, they have to work overtime. So we cut overtime when we can, that's one thing. We look at spending, we try to make sure we spend less. And department heads know, and the sheriff's sitting right there, and you have Mohan, they're very good at, they only get what they need. They know that the finances of the village, so our department heads are, have a tight belt on right now. But as we get ready to go into this next budget year, there's going to be some tough decisions. And this board is going to have to make some tough decisions on what we're going to be moving, moving forward. So I think we made some tough decisions in the last budget, and everyone thought we couldn't get any tougher. It's going to get, it's going to get tougher. Now, again, what else can we do? We continue to reach out for economic development. We continue to reach out, see if there will be more businesses start to come in. And we're working out there weekly, reaching out to businesses, we're reaching out to our state reps, we're reaching out, letting people in on Saw Village, which is the place to come. And we know that we have one store opening up outside Trail, which is Bruce Mobile. We've already contacted for another store to open up, which is Advance All Of Us. We're working with the brokers over in Narcissus, which is community associates, and trying to see, we know we have one building that's vacant over there, it's over 700,000 square foot building. We are reaching out to see what we can do if there's any businesses out there that would like to move into that, to that location. Come January, we're hosting an economic development caucus at Forum by Eric the Village Hall. So again, that allows brokers, it allows economic development people to come to Saw Village. We're bringing them here to showcase our candidacy and hopefully get more businesses to come to Saw Village. So there's a lot, there's a lot there, and I don't know if I answered your question totally, but, and I'm sure there's probably more that could go on to what we need to do. But again, tightening our belts a little bit tighter, which we're doing it right now. Continue to tighten, keep our belts tight. Continue to cut back on overtime. Continue to, as we go into the next budget year, see what cuts we're going to have to make and make some of those tough decisions. But at the same time, we continue to move forward with the IPA, with the consent agreement with the courts, and make sure that we don't go into further litigation, and that's important. So, and again, our litigation costs have gone down in the past year, they continue to go down. And you're going to, you're going to find out, some of the things that's going to be coming out. You look at our police department, our police department is based tougher on crime. So we're going out for fighting crime, we're cutting back our litigation costs. We're not having village board meetings, board meetings, which we don't have. People may criticize that. But if there's nothing on the agenda, there's nothing to present for the village board, we're saving the residents money. I mean, you don't have a meeting that's approximately $800. It may not sound like a lot, but if there's nothing to present, this is when we do business right here. It's not a social time, it's a business time. So if there's nothing to present to the board, we're not having village board meetings. So there's, there's things that we're looking at, how do we move forward with that? So I'll finish your question.
Judy Castor, there's a couple things that I don't understand. The ordinance that you're attempting to get passed, I understand what you're saying about needing for the money and stuff like that, and the other things that you said that didn't sound right. Is this ordinance, and you need to know that ordinance, is there any way we can get out, like the ordinance that you're attempting to push forward? There's something there that indicates that you're due full authority or however it's worded. My, my concern is, although we have a warrant set up there and says nothing, I feel that the public has a right to hear them vote or not vote or whatever. Is this going to be a consensus thing, or we don't know until it's over? I think we have a right to know exactly what's going on and how it's going on. The second thing you said about reaching out, reaching out, reaching out, and that's formidable, and I can see the difference. But my question now is, you keep reaching out, what is our lobby is doing for us? We're paying them $3,000 a month for what? Has you reached out, has you done anything for us up to this point? That's my question.
Okay, let's go to the lobby.
The lobby is working for Saw Village. The lobby is working in street field during the veto session, seeing what they have for the village. They continue to reach out to find out what they can do for the village you're looking at. Three things we talked about was water, which is infrastructure, streets, and economic development. They've reached out already to, they've won or two businesses, to ask them to contact Saw Village. They were down in street field during veto session to see if there's money, if money's available. So they're out there, again, keeping Saw Village in the face of our state representatives and in the face of the governor there. So they are working out there. I just sent a letter out, there's approximately $25,000, I think, that was available for village Saw Village. I sent the letter out to our state reps, or I sent letters out to the governor, asking them to release that $25,000. That $25,000, I told them would be allocated toward infrastructure, which is going toward fire hydrants. So we are reaching out to try to get those funds. So there's things that's going on, talk to the lobby. The ordinance is before us tonight during the seven o'clock meeting. Let's see here, the village authorized to establish a line of credit with a bank or financial institution. Let's see here, the village mayor is authorized to direct, to execute any necessary loan documents, subject to review and approval by the finance director. So what we're doing is, the board is saying, yes, we will move forward to see if we can get this line of credit. And it's authorizing us to go ahead and provide all these loan documents and do all the work together, okay? Everything is going to come, end up coming back before you go forward. The village board needs to know what the interest rates are, and the village board needs to know exactly, are we going to get it? And we don't know for sure, but we're saying not to exceed $500,000. But the bank, they say, we're, we're going to give you $200,000 for a line of credit. We don't know that information yet, so that's why we're there tonight. And again, I've reached out to the board, I've had the finance director reach out to the board, I had the village clerk reach out to the board. This is something that's not a surprise to anyone. We've done good for the last year. And we're still making payroll, that's what's important. Here we are in the month of December, we're making payroll, but you know, we're being proactive. We know there's a problem. We know that we're going to be running short. So rather than waiting until there is no money at all, we're taking the steps necessary to say, you know what? We know that we're going to need some money coming up. We know that we're not going to start exceeding tax revenue to the end of the first quarter. And we need to do something. So this is making sure that the steps are in place, and this line of credit is sitting out there in case we need to pull from that money. So I don't want to answer your question, I'm trying, I'm trying to... So, I don't know if I answered your question, but I'm trying, I'm trying to.
You answered my question, and I understand what you're saying, I understand where we're coming from. At a previous meeting, you, you got approval to shift money around to do whatever. And I asked a lot of questions as to giving pay raises and doing things that I felt that even though they're commendable and the people that have them deserve them, whatever position we're in, shifting spending that money. I asked a lot of questions because I didn't understand. You may have known what's going on, and maybe some of the people sitting up there might have known what was going on. We didn't, we didn't know about this until tonight. So, you know, we didn't know. And I really had an issue with being frowned upon, eyed rolled, or whatever, when I asked the question. I'm asking because I'm concerned.
Oh, I'm not one of those, is it?
No.
Okay, I should make sure.
But I appreciate your answers, I appreciate the time, but I am concerned.
And again, I think we're all concerned, but we're at a concern level here where we see past precedents. And if you go back, like I said, going on back to 2007, this is something the village has had to do going on back to 2007. The, so, again, and you said you didn't know anything about, about this. You're correct, that's why we're having a special meeting, so we can discuss this in the audience. The board, I reached out to the board and asked for suggestions. I had one trustee that came back and asked what was done in the past, okay? So, I'm presenting this to the board and saying, you know, this is what was done in the past, because she asked what was done in the past. And I'm presenting it, saying, here's what was done in 2007, 2008, 2009, and we already know what happened after 2009, 2009, 2013. So, that's why I started hitting the ball wrong, asking the finance director, you know what, let's start doing what we, what we've done in the past and see if we can get this to work. That's why I called for a special meeting, that's why the trustees tonight just saw the, or the ordinance. So, you know, again, I reach out, I continue to reach out. If the trustees come back with something, you know, I, I'm open-minded, and I'm willing to say, you know what, you know, I'm willing to look at other options. But nothing's coming to the center of this table on where we should go and what we should get, and no suggestions to be made.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and I said it before, I was here yesterday, I sat down and talked a long time, I don't know how long it was, we discussed it. I thought maybe it might have related to you, but I don't think, I think you probably didn't have a chance to. But I did ask him the same question that I asked him tonight about, because I even asked him, he did tell me about the line of credit, and I asked him what we're going to use to secure this loan, because we don't have an audit, we're still two years behind. He's just saying, well, we're going to try to base it on 2011 audit. But I did ask about the same question I asked, what we're going to use this money to help pay back some of that money so that we can defray the cost of trying to pull this money out of the taxes that are coming back in March. That's why I asked that question again tonight, because I did propose that to Mohan, he really didn't know, and that's why I was asking you. I don't know what you guys discussed, but that's, that was my concern. I know we have to do, pay payroll, I know we have other obligations. I even asked about the payroll, he said that might be suspect, but between yesterday and today, I guess miraculously we got enough money to pull and to pay payroll. Because I was, when I talked to him, we didn't have enough money to pay payroll, so I guess it must have came in today. But those are questions, but to say that the board didn't try to, or that he didn't, or the board didn't come back, I talked to him, I didn't talk to you, I talked to you on the phone last week, and you told me that we might have to do something between now and then, you said, but I have a special meeting. Next thing I know, there was a special meeting call for today at six o'clock, and I talked to you on the phone about that. But I did talk to Mohan, I did ask those questions, and this is not something brand new. I talked to him and asked him the question, he didn't have to answer. That's why I brought it back today at the meeting, because I, those are some of the questions I need to know, because we continue to keep borrowing, we're going to have a $400,000 debt that we're going to pay off with the way that we got coming in, so that's only a $400,000 hole in the tax money. Now, we're borrowing $500,000 that we're going to pay out, pay back in increments, which would be for, as, as far, or it could be as high as 10 years. Now, we're carrying this debt over like it was a bond, so every year we have to do that. I mean, at some point in time, we have to say, okay, we got to do something, but, don't, just to say that no one came up and no one had any suggestions. I did have a suggestion with Mohan, and I told him that we need to go ahead, if we're going to borrow this, and it was a good thing, we were borrowing money to pay us back, to pay that back and to pay that off in increments, that, that makes sense. Because now we're paying back the money that was budgeted from the budget for the taxpayers, we're paying that off, we're paying that back in increments. Now, what you're saying is, we're going to pay, still pay the money out of the tax money, we're going to still pay this, this out of the tax money, and still we're going to go ahead and borrow the $500,000, and we're still going to have the same hole come, March, because we still have other obligations. We got back pay, it's going to come in, another thing that are coming in in March, litigation and things like that, so. When I talked to him, I had expressed my concern about, okay, well, this is going to help pay that money back that we just got out of, out of the fund, fine, that makes sense, because we have to do something. But if we're going to still have that money, we still got to pay that out of that. This, we're, we're hoping that we get this, this, but if it doesn't come, and it doesn't come through, at some point in time, we have to do something. I know it's, you know, Mohan made a statement that, okay, we're going to get money coming in here, we're going to get money coming to that fund. But if those things are going to happen, I guess this is what the line of credit is for, which makes sense. But if they do happen, I would like to see us on the way to try to pay some of this debt down. That's all I think I'm saying, that's all.
And, and I'm glad the trustees are starting to ask questions. But again, we're looking for ways, I don't know what we can do. This tonight for you is one way, and this board is looking for it. Looking for the trustees to step up, and I'm looking for, I'm looking at the trustees, I'm looking at the entire board, that if you can think of something else, if you can think of another way, you know, great to me, come talk to me, say something. If you want to present it to the village board yourself, I have no problem. You can, you can put it on the agenda of your name, and you can present it yourself. But again, we need to continue to keep the voting going.
I had a question, but you asked the same question I was doing. That's what the right thing is, give you an idea of what you're going to do, just keep talking about it. Why don't you go and suggest things to him, what you can do this, or what you can do that. That's what he needs, that's what you guys are supposed to be doing. Just does, condemning what he's doing, go up and say, well, let me offer you a bit of help, see if you can get this done a different way. That's all he's saying to you, that's the question I was asking. Go to him and say to him, look, what can I do to help you get this done? What can I do? Don't say that, well, we hope this will, show me some help that you can bring to the agency, okay? I don't see that. So, I know we have to do that, we know we, and we all know that. But again, when you go and, you know, if you can't, we have to help you. Don't condemn him, go and try to help him do something. That's what I'm saying. My team members are going to go sit down and say, my lord.
I'm going to answer that question, Mr. Mayor, first of all. There's only two ways that you can balance a budget. There's only two ways that you can bring money or bring things in to balance in a village. One, raise taxes. Two, cut personnel. It's the only way you can do it, unless you know somebody that's going to be out there handing you some money to say, to put this into your pocket. It's the only way you can do it. If you, if, if, if you're spending, override your income, then you have to stop your spending. That's, that's as simple as that. It's not, it doesn't take a mathematician to figure that out. But to say that no one is trying to help, I talked to Mohan on a regular basis, I talked to you several about this. Do I have the answers? No, I do not. But I do have suggestions. And that's only two ways I know. Now, someone else knows another way, but don't set up and say nobody is trying, don't set up and say that, bro, I'm not, bro, I'm asking questions, Mr. Williams, because that's my job as a trustee, to make sure that I, that we ask the proper questions, because if this village goes under, the finances stay and they rest on the trustees. The mayor hangs with the trustees for 14 years, he knows exactly that that's, that's what happens. We have to question it. We don't question if it who's up, because the mayor can only do what the board votes on. He doesn't vote on the money. But to say that we don't try, don't have, don't have an idea, there's only two ways to do it. There's only two ways to do it. Balance a budget. Now, I'm not for raising taxes. I'm not for trying to go, we levy every year, we levy every, no, every December, we levy taxes, and so does your, um, school board, the school districts, they levy every year, that's where your taxes go, because their livelihoods levy so much, we can do it too. One year, we had to do it twice because of a bond requirement. So, I'm not looking to try to raise more money, people that live in the village are struggling, the ones that are still left here to call us a village, because everyone else has left. A lot of people have just got up, walked out, but don't say that we're not, or we're criticized, I'm not criticizing, I'm asking questions, what I was elected to do, it's asked questions, because if I don't ask them, they will. That's all I'm doing, I'm just asking questions. I'm not trying to browbe, I'm not trying to talk against, I may talk loud, because I may want to get my point across, but it's not to berate anyone. And I don't like that word, to show that I'm trying to berate, I'm not trying to go against this administration, this mayor, nothing. I'm asking the question that I feel should be asked.
Mr. Mayor.
I know it's time is up.
Well, he, he, he said that was it, so.
And it was things.
So, initially, I, I have to be consistent with everyone, so. But you know what, I want to hear what you say after me, okay? Uh, trustee Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, as a new trustee, that I know that people realize that Saw Village is in a situation where we need money, but there are a lot of things that we can come together and discuss. It should not be that one person, whether it's the mayor or the trustees, feel like there's zero one responsibility to break Saw Village out of the hole. Not only does the mayor and the board have an opportunity to reach out, like we went to Illinois Municipal League, we network down, that we met people down, that we met people from other municipalities, other villages, that were going through the same things we're going through. But we have to learn what did they do to get out, what were the things that they did, whether it was grant writing, whether it was fundraisers, whether it was economic development. After talking and networking with other people down there, we learned a lot of different things that we could do to help our village. Attending all these different meetings that's going on with the South Suburban Mayor's and Management, we learned about new opportunities and new money that's available to Saw Village in the South Suburbs. Also, there are a lot of residents that know different ways that you can raise money. The lobbyists, it's going to take the whole village working together, not just the mayor, not just the board. A lot of people are intellectual and articulate and know how to find money, and know how to do resource. So, I'm making a plea to everybody in Saw Village, and our friends, the local officials and others, the suburban, surrounding Saw Village, if you know a way that we can raise money, it's going to take all of us working together. It's not just up to the mayor, just the board, it's up to all of us to go out and try to, if we care about where we live, I think we should all get involved. Thank you.
I agree. We agree.
I think what trustee Burgess said was a good point, as far as, there's only two ways to get more money into the village. And we attempted to kind of do this. We did. We made big cuts in code enforcement, we made big cuts in public works, and we, we've heard from multiple residents for multiple years, how, why am I getting a ticket and so-and-so's grass isn't being cut? How come the leaves aren't getting picked up? How come the, the snow isn't getting picked up? We've heard problems, we continue to keep those cuts. We're cutting services, we cut personnel, sure, we're cutting, we're cutting how much money we're spending every two weeks for payroll, but we're cutting services for the residents. And I don't know, I don't have a time machine, and I don't know if anybody can recall, say, probably three, three and a half years ago, that there was one person on this board that said, the only way we're going to get out of this is to raise taxes. It was not a popular decision. It wasn't. And in fact, at that time, that person who suggested that was not a homeowner, did not have to pay home taxes, have to pay taxes, but that person is not a homeowner, and I understand what raising taxes would mean. However, that is the only way it's going to happen. Trustee Washington said, we have to look at what other suburbs are doing. That's what other suburbs are doing. Everywhere around you is raising fees, your, your postage stamp goes up every year, and they're laying off people, they're closing post offices, because prices are getting higher, no, we're not getting any more funding, the state's not paying us as they should, because they don't have the money, because the government doesn't have the money, the federal government is to pay them. We've got, we're decreasing in our resident taxes because people are moving out, as I don't remember which trustee said that, people are moving out, they're not moving back in, renters are moving back in. So, the problem is, is that I know it's not a popular decision, but just think, if we would have raised taxes three and a half years ago, when I suggested it, where could we have been now? I don't know. We could have been way worse off, we could have had less homeowners in Saw Village, I don't know. But part of the reason why it is difficult to make a suggestion, while I do believe it's, it's everybody's responsibility in Saw Village, my background's not in finance. As long as I've been a trustee, we rely on village managers, finance directors, the people who we pay to go out and do, assist us in research, tell us what we should be researching, give us the, the start line basically. And I think that that's our job, to do the research, to do our own investigation, to come up with ideas, but unfortunately, we are kind of blacked out, the guys, of the people that we put in these positions. So, that's, I think that, I don't, hope I'm not speaking with the further mayor, but if anybody out there, as trustee Washington said, we do have people, residents of Saw Village who are very capable, if anybody else can figure out a different way to do it besides the suggestion I have of raising taxes, feel free. I'm, everybody's, the mayor's email address is on the website, my email address is on the website. I don't think it's too much to ask to be an active citizen, to be an active participant, but unfortunately, as much as nobody wants to say it, raising fees, fees like village stickers, fees like dog tags, fees like tickets, all these fees are revenues that we get in, raising taxes, things like that, it's, it's not something anybody wants to do, it's a necessary evil, and I do not see how we're going to be able to proceed with anything without doing something like that, because I really don't think we can afford to cut any more services. We closed the village hall on Wednesdays, oh my goodness, it would be a huge deal, how could you do that? Oh no, citizens can't come to village hall on Wednesdays. We did it as a cost savings. We heard black, we opened it back up. I mean, we're, we're, damn if we do, and damn if we don't, in a lot of situations. So, I mean, the agendas for people talking to the audience, on board meeting days, it used to be at the end, after we made the vote, then we heard, why would you have the public comment at the end, after you took the vote? Because then we can't tell you how we feel about it. Okay, so we move it to the front, so people can tell us how they feel about it before we vote. Oh, no, well, see now, why, now we got to sit here and we got to wait, we want to wait to end the meeting. Again, damn if you do, damn if you don't. So, anybody has any suggestions, I totally agree with everybody else on this board, let us know, but I would like to see an aspect on raising taxes. If you could come to the board at the next committee meeting, uh, your professional opinion, what we could do, there's an election in March, it's something that would have to be a referendum, I'd like to put it on the table, I would like to seriously, seriously discuss it. Three and a half years ago, I was shut down, I can be shut down again, I'm just one person, but I'd like to throw it out there. Thank you.
If, if no one else, I think, you know, is going to forward, I'd like to ask for adjournment, because we have the 6:45, which is the current minute right now for the next meeting. So, if there's nothing else, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Motion, second officer, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, adjourn. All right, so move into our, our next meeting. Move into the special meeting for the corporate authorities. Go sir, please follow.
Here.
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 All right. Number two, 2013 CDVG performance hearing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is our annual CDVG performance hearing, current by the county, we talk about what we did this past year with the funding that the county does. So, here we go. Cook County requires recipients of community development grant funding to conduct a performance hearing every November until all projects are completed. So, we're going to talk about the status, the estimated completion date, and financial status of Saw Village. One open project is the CDVG roadway repair project, Cook County Project Number 12-029. 2012 program year, CDVG roadway repair project involved funding targeted to improve the 2012 program year CDB roadway repair project involved funding targeted to improve the following street, 215th Place from Peterson Avenue to Jeffrey Avenue. This work consisted of surface removal and replacement, preparation of base and aggregate base repair, combination concrete removal and replacement, sidewalk removal and replacement, and installation of technical warnings, structure adjustments, and all necessary restoration. This work produced safer street conditions for those traveling on it and who live alongside this roadway. The total of 1,000 millimeter feet of roadway was replaced, and the project work has been completed. Cook County awarded Saw Village $200,000 of the project. Contractor invoiced $237,274.48 in July. We are awaiting the contractor's final invoice for the project. Balance of the project will be paid for with motor fuel tax funding. Fifty percent of the CDB funding was applied for in June of 2013, and the remaining 50% of the CDB funding was applied for in August. That is everything that I have.
And the board has a question.
What area was that?
215th Place from Peterson to Jeffrey.
All right, we'll move into for a public comment, this hearing. Public comment. Seeing none, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Come on, say aye.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.